Okay. I call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, July 13th, and the meeting begins at 7:00 p.m. Dr. Richard Kenner has just a couple items to mention.
Just a few items tonight in terms of the table file. First of all, just a type of rapid layer. The financial report should have been for May 2015, not April 2015. The memorandum is correct. We just need to adjust the actual financial report on the agenda to match that month. Also, we have one appointment. We have several increase-decreases and change in assignment, and we have one leave of absence night request of the to be in to the set agenda.
Okay. Thank you very much. If there's no objection, we'll adjourn. I don't see a change agenda as we proceed with the meeting. We now have an opportunity for a public comment. This is a chance for members of the district to address the board. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board? I'm not surprised there's not anyone here, but okay. So we'll move on to approval of the minutes. Excuse me. Four members, you have in your packet minutes for the regular school board meeting held on June 8th. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Second by Noel. Is there any discussion? So all those in favor approving the minutes for the regular school board meeting held on Monday, June 8th, 2015, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion heard. Let's move on to announcements and recognition.
Okay. And I give up a few this evening. First of all, I'm very pleased to announce that our application for ADSSIS funds for fiscal year 2016 and '17 has been approved by the Commissioner of Education. And again, thanks to all the hard work of Mary, and Hope, and Cheryl, and others who put together the work to get that done. Basically, ADSSIS is an alternative delivery of specialized instructional services, state aid. The purpose of it is to provide instruction and services to capable students that need additional academic or behavioral supports to succeed in the general education environment, who may eventually qualify for special intervention services if they're not available. Remember, we talked about this earlier, as this is a way for us to address the need to increase the intervention intervention support both for academic and for behavioral interventions. And the way that the state aid is identified is it identifies that we will receive $193,000. The reality is, we get actually 45 percent of that amount. Basically, we have to cover, and 55 percent, the state has to cover. So out of that $193,000, we will get approximately $222,000 of new money for the next two years. And again, what that allows us to do is to maintain the folks that we currently have as our T.I. coaches. We have the ability to do additional coaching at each of the buildings and the elementary level. And we also have the ability to provide new intervention coaches from their P.E.A., S.A.M., academic support, and both the middle school and the high school. So we really have been able to fully implement the intervention programs across the club. Again, we're very pleased with this. And this is one that, again, based on how this plays out, there is the ability to continue to request these dollars in the future. Again, we have no idea where the state's going to be after the next two years, but we're covered at least for the next two years in the process. So again, a very nice job done by the party folks, and a lot of faith in whatever in terms of the fact that we really had a good team working on putting that together. Also, we have the National League of Cities, the profile on our primetime program, and the summer programming for the latest national after-school network newsletter. It's a very exciting recognition for Northfield and the many primetime partners Derek Lewis shared with the school board members last week. Also, the Northfield High School, the 2015 graduate, Kate Arneson, was respected as the National Native Athletic and Athletic Administrators Association, Section 5, Scout Athlete of the Year. Section 5 is comprised of the states of Minnesota, North and South Dakota, Nebraska, Missouri, and Kansas. Kate is the lone female representative from the six-state region in the United States. She has won a P5, and is the National Scout Athlete of the Year. It's a great honor for Kate. We're also very proud of our high school baseball team, who finished fourth at the NSHSL State Baseball Tournament, as well as Delaney Fisher, who went on to study golf in Nigeria, and Chad Abix Keifer, who are participants in the state track and field. Alexis was the runner-up at state football. So again, congratulations to all of those individuals in our high school athletic teams. And those are the announcements.
We'll move on to other things.
I just have nothing. I was able to attend the Women in Northfield Giving Support, as we know, Win, grant award celebration at Health and Life Center. It was a really great evening. It was really fun to see so many grant applications coming through from Win, and to collectively see their generosity to the school districts was really good. They gave a total of $74,000 in grants, of which almost $40,000 went to Northfield's school district, either our programs or community education or community services program. There were 14 different people that fell up from community services, from teachers, thanking, thanks for the generosity, but I, what was most touching, I think, was to see the passion that they have to their program and excitement for their program, and to see how many, across the district, their collective efforts, and so many to secure these grants. So it was really fun. And I was there with lots and lots of people, and so those are great people. To me, always are very grateful for the support.
Okay. So we will move on to items for discussion and reports. We have GAZB 68. Exciting topic, and the agenda is Bound Book Store.
Good evening.
What about?
The next exciting chapter in GAZB.
Yes, you guys will all just be on the edge of your seats. So I just wanted to kind of give you a brief overview about the new standard that we will be implementing on our financials for our 14, 15 school years of the others that I'm currently working on. This will be in effect for them. So basically, the primary objective, and this is quoted right off the actual GAZB documents, is to improve accounting and financial reporting by state and local governments or pension. And it's very complex, so I'm not going to say that it's going to be simple or clear, but hopefully, you know, they have good intentions. This is not, it's not new, and that's what I would like to focus on, is it's been around, it's just not, it's new to our book. So basically, what it is in a nutshell, is they are requiring the unfunded, they call it the net pension liability. It is basically the unfunded portion of all public sector pension plans to allocate that to their members, essentially. So for the school district, PERA and CRA are our public pension programs. So we are basically going to have to allocate, they're allocating to us a portion of their unfunded liability. As the members, we generate their only source of revenue, essentially, other than their investment income. So we are primarily responsible. If there was, you know, a funding issue, we would be the ones that would have to increase the contribution and chip in as well. So that's kind of the thought process behind it. But basically, they're, we're putting on a really large liability to our financial statements, and we're just moving it from CRA or PERA's books to ours. And every school district in the state is going to have to do this. Every local government entity in the state is actually going to be doing this with their, whatever their pension program. So the important point that I really wanted to get across is, again, that it's not new. Yes, we're adding $24 million liability, which is a really big number, but it says long-term liability. It's not saying we owe $24 million tomorrow. It's a long-term liability that's always been reported by PERA and CRA. It's just a matter of who's reporting the liability. The, like I said, the pension debt has always been disclosed by CRA and PERA. It's the allocation process and us putting it on our books that is the new liability out. And that's what GAZB 68 is reporting. And the liability, I know you guys are all really versed in governmental accounting standards, but we have, we have two sets of financial statements, essentially. So we have what they call a government-wide set of financials, and that is, our first one's in our audit book, and it covers really the long term. It includes all of our fixed assets, our long-term debt. And then we have our fund statement. And that's what you guys are more familiar with, is actually the general fund and the operating budget. This is only going to affect our government-wise. It is not going to affect our levies, our budget, or anything like that. It is kind of just a long-term picture liability that we're looking at. It does not affect CRA or PERA's funded status. All of the documents that I've read on this is they're appropriately funded and doing all the right things to make sure that the pension's there for the long term. So that is kind of a misconception that's been going around, is that there's something wrong with their funding status, and that's why they're requiring us to put it on our books, but that's not the case. We have always and will continue to budget for pension expense annually. The budget that I came to in June or presented in May for the general fund has an amount budgeted in there for what we pay annually to CRA and PERA. It's about, last year was about $1.8 million. Depends on our, it goes up as a percentage of our salaries. So that is always in the budget. It will always be in the budget as long as the state statute that we contribute to that. So that part is not changing. And it's probably easier to think about it like a mortgage. You may have a $200,000 mortgage, but you don't pay $200,000. You pay $20,000 each year, and you have it as a long-term liability. It's very similar for us. It's going to be 24.8 million, and we're going to pay the $1.8 million that we've been budgeting annually. That's not changing at all. It's really just putting a pretty big number on our government-wide. And like I said, it's not affecting any of our funding, our levies, our budget, or anything like that. All the numbers that were presented in June are still the same. This is the numbers. So the first column there is what we actually contributed last year to CRA and PERA. And when I say last year, I mean this year, 14, because I'm still in last year, working on it. So I get my terminology a little mixed up this time of year. So CRA annually was 1.3 million, well, 450,000 to PERA for just shy of $1.8 million. The numbers in the right column are the numbers we have received from CRA and PERA. So this is what we will actually be booking. So it's 19.2 million and 5.5 million, so for a total of 24.8 million. And just to give you a perspective, for CRA, that is, we are 0.1 percent, 0.11 percent of their total unfunded liability. So 19 million dollars is 0.1 percent of their total unfunded, so you can kind of grasp how large their actual number is. But they basically take our total contributions and deck it up against every other school district in the state, and we were 40,000 of them last year. That's how they compute those numbers. And so this is something that they will have to do annually. They will have to give us new numbers each year and put an amount on it. And we will have some additional steps to audit the numbers they're giving us to make sure that they're reasonable. So that's, just in summary, again, not new. We're just shifting who's responsible for reporting it. It's really the non-cryptic of it, because it's a very big number, and it will impact the way our financials look, but it's our long-term financials. So if you have any questions, that's kind of the gist of it. I just didn't want you to come in November with a $24 million change in PERA audits. Do you mind if I ask this to you? Yeah. I have a question. I lost the line. Why are we doing this? Because we are a local government entity. We are governed by GAZB, which is the government, government accounting management. So basically, whatever they say we have to do. But why are they doing it? They are, they really feel that because the, we're the ones that contribute to CRA and PERA, so ultimately, if there was a funding crisis, all they do is increase the rates which we have to pay them. So truthfully, it's our liability, because we're the only ones contributing to it. The employee contributes as well, and I'm not sure how they're handling that piece of it, CRA and PERA, but it's essentially their, they want the public to know that we have this outstanding pension liability, just like we have our long-term debt gets reported. We have, you know, we only pay $5 million a year, but we have $60 million outstanding. It's just kind of a disclosure piece, if that makes sense.
Think about transparency, and disaggregating, and you were 0.1 percent of the overall liability through the state. What really they're doing is they're disaggregating that data and making us report it, so that a local, a local concerned citizen can look at what the outstanding pension deposits. And, you know, across the nation, there's been some questions about state-level pensions over the last several years. And one of the things that states who are in trouble have been to not increase the contribution. Well, Minnesota, over the past several years, both the employer and the employee that pay an additional was like a half percent a year over a three-year period. In fact, this is the first year we don't have a raise in it for a while. So Minnesota's pensions overall have actually been scored pretty well, and I think that this is one of the oldest reasons, is that they have tended to be very transparent. And I think this is the case where just disaggregating the data, I think, allows someone from the public to say, how much is my local school district paying this?
Do you have a question? I have one question. So I guess my question, in the case of still being you and your staff to have to, well, probably not, but when you said you had to make sure that the levels were up, that could be a little bit effort?
It'll be, I'm not even sure, to be completely honest, because it's brand-new. We are, I'll be working with our auditors this year to establish what the parameters are, and what the appropriate level of how much we can trust the data from them. Basically, both CRA and PERA hired adolescent lawyers to audit all of the data that they're basically giving out, because there's many more numbers to it than what I showed. I was just going to give you the high level. But there will be some additional work. I don't anticipate that it will be significant, but I'm really not sure at this point. It's mostly just a employer piece, so I don't think it's going to be significant to people. But they got the right contribution, they're not sort of anything.
I think one of the curious ones that informed me about this is because if someone, a concerned citizen, is looking at our financial statements and looks at the old statement and a new statement, sees this $24 million piece, we wanted to give you some, some background to be able to explain it, folks. And I expect to overview this with our challenges and celebrations document as well, because I know many of you look at that as a go-to. But really, it's not, you know, it's not what it says, but if someone looks and says, here's a $25 million debt, we wanted you to know why, and that it's not new, we can't say that it's not new, it's not new. Just so people are aware of it.
The reality, again, is it's simply because who is reporting? It's, for years and years, it's been reported by the state pension boards. So CRA, PERA have done reporting, and they've aggregated the data across all the districts in the state. Now they're disaggreging the data, basically handing it off to us. But other than putting a number into our general disclosure in terms of the audit, it has absolutely no effect on anything. It doesn't affect, it doesn't affect levies, it doesn't affect revenue we're receiving, expenditures, we're making, anything else other than demonstrating the total amount of debt that's involved. And again, the important thing you have to remember is, the portion of the funding of the entire pension plan is really due to the, the district and the employees' contribution is still a fairly small part of the total pension plan. Most of the pension plan comes from the interest made on long-term investments. And the only time that really, the sort of, as I take that, was back in 2008, when everybody got a hiccup. Ours was a bit smaller, and they've kind of come roaring back. They've been making, they were 8, 10, 12 percent increases in terms of the finances in the last few years. So they are, now I believe it's somewhere around, what's, 83 percent or something like that, from fully London. So as far as the state, we're in one of the best places. There are some other states that are struggling, because again, they haven't tried to address issues when they started to see a drop in the funds that were available. So they were, they weren't, they had local teachers and administrators and professionals and support staff put more money into it, and the state also was not paying more money. The state has done all the right things there. So I think we're really good shape, but I think that was very appropriate for her to make sure that the group was first, way before you saw it happen, and you were to friends and neighbors, especially.
Appreciate it. Thank you. We will move on then to, to the video from the center, and experts today to help with public administration. [Music] 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 [Music]
Anyway, very, very successful for the first annual. And again, as you saw, John, basically, was kind of the driving force from the Career Technical Education Booster Club, in putting this together and grounding up, I believe it was somewhere in the neighborhood of 33 to 36 different vendors, including a number of the different trades, as well as several of the community colleges in the state to put this piece on. And I think people overall were very pleased with the initial piece with this, and I think they're very interested in continuing to look at this kind of program in the future to go forward, because I think it's given kids a chance to take a look at some other options that they may not have thought of before. And I think a number of them came away with, you know, there's maybe some other things I might think about, depending on where I'm headed in the future, and knowing that they can lose good pay and good job opportunities, not only with post-secondary program in a traditional format, but also in a variety of different formats, from apprenticeships through technical college, et cetera, that are ready out there and waiting for them, and that people are ready for some of them, really well. Very, very positive experience.
It was, I, I, to do the, it was great. And one thing that was good to hear with visiting with the mother of the diggers, is the quality of the questions that they received from the schools, and they, thanks to them to move us, they were ready to bring high schools over. And they, I think they tapped into all the things that really was in to engage the students. They wanted to make it very hand-run. They saw the diversity of goods, and done tile work, and there was a lot of interactive youth that went to high schools, and hot dogs, which is good. But I think overall, they've been there to have perhaps with their students, and they're interested in learning the quality of the students. And John Stubb did an incredible amount of work, and it was extremely live, if you were going to just kind of fend that yourself. It's a year that they want to come out and show you.
So we will move on now to items for individual action. Our first is a resolution regarding Christopher Columbus Day.
Okay. This we've done for ever, I think. Not since 1492, but at least for as long as I've been around. No, I need to check. Has it been around since you've been around? We do need, with Christopher Columbus Day, Monday, there's this, basically, Minnesota statute that says no public business can be acted on Christopher Columbus Day unless the board passes a resolution saying it's not a holiday for the district. So as we've done every year for many, many years, we just need to have a resolution indicating that Christopher Columbus Day shall not be a holiday for Northfield Public Schools during the 2015, '16 school year.
So board members, the resolution, to approve the following resolution regarding Columbus Day, whereas Minnesota's statute, section 645.44 subdivision 5, and Minnesota's statutes 1208.42, gives the district an option on determining whether Christopher Columbus Day shall be a holiday, and be a result-
a holiday, then we are resolved that Christopher Columbus on October 12th, 2015, that day shall not be a holiday. Is there motion to approve this resolution? Move by Margaret, second. Second by Noel. Any questions, discussion? So we'll move this resolution to vote public. Juanzo?
Aye.
Fidel?
Aye.
And Richard?
Aye.
Next, we're individual action. I have some individual action, excuse me. We have a resolution separating employment with district employees. We will need to look at these resolutions separately. I will start with the first resolution, which is to adopt the resolution separating employment with employee aid due to a family. Is there a motion to approve? Move by Margaret, second. Second by Jeff. Okay. Any questions or comments? All right, we will begin to vote public. Juanzo?
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay. We'll continue on then with the second resolution and that would be to adopt, I'm sorry, to approve the superintendent's recommendation to adopt the resolution separating employment with employee aid due to a family. Is there a motion to approve? Move by Jeff, second. Second by Noel. Questions or comments? Okay, we'll have that second vote public. Juanzo?
Aye.
Fidel?
Aye.
And Richard?
Aye.
Motion's good. We can move on then to items for consent grouping. I was reminded there were a couple of items in the personal item, personal items in the paper file that we added to the consent grouping. Is there anything anyone would like to pull in that we think? Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Move by Margaret, is there a second? Second by Noel. Any discussion?
I just, again, would like to call out in the gift agreement, the fact that our Northfield Booster Club has donated basically $13,000 to be used to purchase a number of items for various co-creator activities and is also going to additional $1,587 to cover the athletic fee waivers for the 2014, 15 year. So the total, fifth agreement for them is almost 25,000 dollars that they are providing to support our teams and also support individual students so that they can participate in activities. So very much appreciated.
Okay. So we'll move on to the vote then. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, items for individual action, or I'm sorry, items for information. The first item is appointed to the board of directors for our Southeast Minnesota Special Education Call-Up. Now affectionately known as Don's Act. And I, the board, we have appointed Margaret Plangelo to serve on that board. And we certainly thank Margaret for being willing to serve in that capacity. Well, I know you do a great job, not only of the board, but also of the community. Thank you very much for that. Thank you.
It was congenial.
It's exciting to see it move along and there's a lot of yet, yet to be done and we appreciate you all of the stuff that you've been doing. So second item would be schools for equity and education.
And simply wanted to share with you just the, the one pager that Brad Lindell sent out to us. Again, a tremendous, tremendous amount of work on the part of administrators, teachers and board members and folks from across the state. C was very much deep in the middle of the efforts to, number one, to increase the basic funding of whatnot. As you remember, we started the session with the governor indicating 1% and 1%. The senate indicating 1% and 1% and the house indicating 0.6 or 0.7% in each year. We did end up with a 2% increase in each year, which again, will help us to at least address the inflationary costs for this next two-year period. Also, major coup on the part of C was the creation of the Equivaled Deferred Maintenance Agreement and having that now be available in all districts, remember in the past, it was only available to the largest 25 districts in the state. This allows us to take a look at addressing long-term major deferred maintenance pieces and using dollars from that deferred maintenance revenue to address those pieces in the future as we look forward. So, and that's really looking at the three-year process that would expand the ability to do the deferred maintenance over the beginning in 2017. Also, in terms of the early childhood programming, I believe that it's very clear that C's support in the final education bill that made the early childhood programming, we use it with the school districts, they listened to our concerns about the fact that we really didn't have space to create all the preschool or four-year-old program for the student or if we currently have all the transportation necessary to do that piece. And instead, I think gave us a very focused bill which gave us additional dollars in terms of school readiness program as well as additional dollars in the scholarship program, which again provides dollars not only to individual parents, but also dollars for the school district. We suffered about a rate of what, now $7, $500 per student is the maximum they could want to be able to have. And then finally, we also saw a Shandwich program receiving on revenue. How we began to identify that as an issue and really the expansion there is going to go after the seven years as opposed to six years, which the reality is research says that for a student who comes close to learning their skills, it really takes them seven years to build complete literacy, not only in terms of conversation, but actually the technical that C needs to be able to do well in math courses, science courses, et cetera. So C was very much in the middle of this and I think it's just important to re-eyes the fact that they have with us and the other 56 districts that are part of C, pack the capital and they're supporting the program that we need to support. So a good job.
Do, when you have time for some, for some, for some people on behalf of the, they're present in a similar environment and many of the leaders of the country have gotten involved with many of the celebrities and it was really interesting that for many of our people in the community, the first time they kind of had stepped in their, told me wider in the political world and I think many were surprised that it really was a hard fought battle. And I think they learned about the complexity of school funding and that in the face of the $2 billion outlay, so you may not get even posted what we need. So I think they realized that it's always a challenge and that hopefully they stay engaged beyond this particular session, which we go and go and advocate for education because, you know, as superintendent for the school board, we sort of looked at almost sort of this big oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. But when parents talk and students talk and community members are putting a lot to this reason, you know, we keep, we keep saying that, but I think as soon as legislators hear from parents, when they're in the capital and you're at committee meetings and he gets up there and they, they have to find out whether it becomes a parent's job or or someone in the community, legislators, I can't take counsel and I think they do that when they get emails and stuff like this. We thank the many community members. Voice is heard. Okay. So now that's it for items for information. Feature meetings Monday, August 10th and then again on Monday, August 24th, both at 7:00 PM in the High School Union. Then one last reminder, we have a closed negotiation strategy sessions all over the year of the season. So with that, I ask for a motion to adjourn. Move by Noel. Second by Jeff. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.